Hey, welcome. Looks like technology is working. At least partially okay in the schoolhouse tonight, so. We have video.
So it's gonna work. We're all right. We don't have to do the thing last after we passed.
Yep, looks like we're doing okay this week. Hey, it is seven o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order a second.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember Derwin.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Here.
Mayor Hughes.
Here.
We will begin with oral communications. If there's anybody who is here who would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to do so. Please raise your hand using the Zoom raise hand feature. And I cannot see that tonight because of Wi-Fi issues that we are having in here. So if there are any hands, Jeremy, if you'd let me know.
No hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. That brings us then to item four announcements and presentations. We have two presentations tonight. The first is Peninsula Clean Energy Update. And I see Jan Pepper is here for this tonight. Are you introducing this, Jeremy? Is anybody introducing this? Are we just going straight over to?
Let's go straight to Jan. It's good to see you, Jan.
Yeah, nice to see all of you. Thank you for inviting us tonight. I have some slides and I will share my screen and pull those up for you. And hopefully you can see those, okay?
Yep.
And you can hear me, okay? Okay.
Yes.
Well, thank you so much for having us here today. We're, I'm here to give you an update for the town council on what's been going on at Peninsula Clean Energy and what's been going on as it relates to Portola Valley. And so hopefully, as you all know, we are your Community Choice Energy Program. We are a not-for-profit public agency that was launched in 2016. And every city council, including Portola Valley, and the Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to join Peninsula Clean Energy in 2016. I don't know who the representative was in Portola Valley at the time.
It was me.
Are you in that picture?
Craig is, Craig is in there because I missed, I missed two meetings in seven years and Craig was, Craig's, all the photos have Craig and not me because they were all taken at two meetings.
Okay, well, we'll have to take another picture and make sure you're in it, Jeff.
I was running out.
So this is how it works. We are the generation provider, so we contract for the electricity. We put it on the grid. It is delivered on PG&Es, poles and wires. And then is delivered to you and you receive the savings and the clean electricity that we're providing. So ninety-four percent of the customers in Portola Valley are Peninsula Clean Energy customers. And one thing unique about you is that when you signed up in 2016, you made the decision that everyone in your community was going to get our Eco Plus, our Eco 100 product, actually the, the upgrade product. And you were the first community, I think, in CCA land overall to do that. So for all of the other jurisdictions, they were automatically enrolled in Eco Plus, which right now is fifty percent renewable, a hundred percent carbon free. And the rates are five percent lower than PG&E. And the Eco 100 product, which all of you were automatically enrolled in, however, people had the option to opt down to Eco Plus, whoops. Is a one hundred percent renewable product. It's fifty percent solar, fifty percent wind, and it's cost about four dollars more per month than the Eco Plus product. Additionally, all of the municipal facilities in Portola Valley have opted up to Eco 100. So you're a very clean community, very renewable community. And because of the discount that we have on our rates, your, the people and businesses of Portola Valley saved ninety-three thousand dollars in calendar year 2021. So overall, in the five and a half years that we've been serving you, then people have probably saved close to half a million dollars by being a part of Peninsula Clean Energy, money that stayed in your pockets to be spent in your community as opposed to going into PG&Es pockets. And because you are Eco 100, the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from the electricity used in Portola Valley has reduced by ninety-nine point seven percent compared to 2016. You are also recognized by the EPA Green Power Community Program for leadership in renewable energy by being an Eco 100 community. So congratulations on that. So our, our standard product, fifty percent renewable, a hundred percent clean. The renewable resources are solar, wind, geothermal and small hydro. This picture on the left is the Wright Solar Project just outside of Los Banos in Merced County that's, was built and for us to receive all of the output from that facility. It started generating in January of 2020. And we will be having our ribbon cutting for that project next spring, three years late, but we'll finally, we'll finally have it. Jeff, make sure you're there and we'll get a picture of you there, okay?
I didn't realize we had, we did, we did a groundbreaking there. Gosh, okay.
We did a groundbreaking.
I'll, I'll be there.
We didn't do the ribbon cutting, which we had planned for April of 2020, but
Right.
shut down. And then the, the picture on the right is one of the wind facilities. I believe it's the one in the Altamont Pass where we're receiving wind power. So our goal is to deliver one hundred percent renewable every hour of every day for all of our three hundred ten thousand plus customer accounts by 2025. And this is a very leading edge goal that we have. And actually, at our board retreat last month, we went into detail about how we're going to be doing this and the fact that we believe we can do this with continuing to have a discount in our rates. So we're very excited about that. And we hope that by us doing that, it will encourage others to take the leap and provide a more sustainable product to their customers. We also partner with our communities to go a hundred percent greenhouse gas free in other uses of electricity. So we make this clean electric, electricity, and then we are encouraging people to use it for transportation and buildings because that is where the most of the emissions now in the county are coming from. And this graph here shows that transportation makes up almost fifty percent of the greenhouse gas emissions in the county. And methane from natural gas use in buildings makes up about thirty percent. So our focus is to use this clean electricity for transportation and buildings. And I'll talk about some of those programs that we have. So one of them is reach codes, which is having the communities adopt building codes that reach beyond what the state's requirements are. And electrification of buildings is a key way to reduce those emissions. Oops, I'm sorry. And we partner with cities to provide technical assistance and model reach codes. And in fact, on your agenda, I thought it was this evening, although I'm not sure it's, is it on your agenda for this evening? You are considering, okay, you're considering reach codes. And if you pass what you've proposed, they will be some of the most progressive to date that we have in the county. So we have been actively involved with you to provide technical assistance for that effort and no doubt, we have someone in the online here to help answer any questions when you get to that agenda item. We also have a number of other programs to support our community, such as providing incentives for electric vehicles and for charging infrastructure for e-bikes, solar and battery storage, electric water heaters, refrigerator and air conditioner recycling and home upgrades. And in fact, a number of residents in Portola Valley have participated in this, these programs for the e-bike program, which is targeted towards income qualified folks. Three people in Portola Valley have participated so far for the used EV program, which is also targeted. Well, we provide a higher incentive for income qualified folks, but anyone can get a incentive for a used electric vehicle. And two people in Portola Valley have participated so far on the solar and battery storage program. Seven people have participated in that. Eleven people in Portola Valley have installed heat pump water heaters through our electric water heater program. And we also had a program a couple of years ago to provide portable batteries and portable solar at no cost to those residents who were medically vulnerable and income qualified. And when, one resident in Portola Valley was able to participate in that program. We also partner with our schools and as we know, you know, teaching our students about climates and have being energy literate is really important because they're the ones who are inheriting this earth. And in 2021 and 2022, there were eight hundred ninety-four students in the Sequoia Union High School District and Portola Valley School District combined, who were part of those programs. Eight hundred fifty-two students were taught by teachers who had participated in our teacher fellowship program to develop energy-related curriculum. And forty-two students participated in the Youth Climate Ambassadors Program. So we're very excited about those programs and we love working with the students. Some other activities going on in your area. We're working with the Portola Valley School District and to privately own Portola Valley locations to install EV charging stations through our EV Ready program. And then, of course, we partner with you on the city council. Jeff has been a member of our board for a long time since the beginning. In fact, Jeff was our chairman, chairperson for two or three years. Was it three years, Jeff?
Three years.
An excellent chairperson. And Jeff has been very actively involved with us. Jeff works in the energy field, so he's, he understands what we're talking about when some of our board members don't have that energy background. We try to, we try to make our presentations such that people can understand, but Jeff's been super helpful, super involved, and we really, really appreciate your involvement, Jeff. And Craig Hughes, we appreciate that you sign, you show up when it's time to take a photograph. But also, we appreciate your, your involvement and to be there for, for Jeff if he can't make it. And of course, we're always willing and interested in informing all of the council members on what we're doing and answering any questions that you may have. So that's what I have for tonight. You can visit, learn more on our website. And we're also in social media. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have tonight.
Thank you very much, Jan. Are there any council questions?
No. Jeff has his hand up.
Yeah. I will, I just, well, first of all, just thank you, Jan, for, for being here. And I think I see Mark Hirschman is, is one of our, of our policy people is, is here as well. Thank you guys for, for being here. I'll just elaborate a little bit on what Jan has said. That the, the goal she mentioned, the twenty-fourth, the, the hundred percent time coincidence power, it's, it's never been done anywhere by a load serving entity. And so we really are breaking ground with that. And at our board retreat last month, we actually got a presentation showing that it's, it's, it's not just feasible. It's, it's, it's not even significantly more expensive than, than business as usual. So it's really exciting news. We are also going beyond electricity to decarbonization. We kind of report on that. I have to say that the progress PC has been able to make on both decarbonizing electricity and decarbonizing other sectors is beyond what I personally believed was possible seven years ago. And that's, I credit staff mostly with tremendous, just, just, just amazing work on this. So so Jan, thank you again for your leadership there. And, and I thank all the staff who are, who are here this now or later. And I'll say it again, this, this organization has been successful at a level that I don't think any of us, I mean, we knew it was important. I don't think any of us knew it would be this successful. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Jan. I think one of the most significant things I ever did in my career on the council is vote to join PC. Has been dramatic. And as Jeff says, I think even bigger than what we expected when we, when we signed on. So thank you and your team and everybody involved for all the work that you've done. Is there any public comment on this item?
Can I make one?
Sorry, go ahead, Marian.
Are we, are we doing comments? Council comments?
Yeah, let me, let me go to public comments.
Two hands raised. The first is Karen.
Okay.
Hi, I just had one question for Jan. You said there's only eleven people that actually installed electric heat pumps. And I would like to encourage the community to install those before your hot water heater dies because they're essentially free if you actually time your, the heating of your hot water shower. So I'm actually quite surprised that the number's only eleven. So I'd like to point out that. Thank you.
We know that there's eleven that participated in our program. There may be others, but we're providing a one thousand dollar rebate and Bayren is providing another thousand dollars. So it makes it pretty economical to go ahead and do that.
The next speaker is David Cardinal. David, you'll have to unmute on your end. There you go. David, are you there?
Maybe a microphone problem.
It looks like he said muted, but maybe the mic's not working yet.
All right, well, we'll try coming back to you, David. And are there any other? Okay, David, just jump in if your, if your microphone starts working. Marian.
I was on the CCAG Resource Management Climate Protection Committee when this idea bubbled up. I don't know if it was two thousand fourteen or fifteen. And we had quite a few discussions about it. And Dave Pine ran with it. And like my colleagues, it is incredible how successful this has become. And think back when it was just an idea in a committee. And where we are now is, as Craig said, something to be so proud of. And I hope our residents are proud. Thanks.
You have a comment? David Cardinal, last chance. Sounds like still.
Okay, is that working?
There you are.
Now we got you, David. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that. Don't know what's up, but a couple of points. First, we are huge fans of solar and actually bought our first solar system from Jan twenty years ago. And we are on the second one. So I'm all for that, but I have two concerns. One is that going all electric right now is a big problem. We, we lose power here maybe five days a year overall. And we've never lost natural gas in forty, forty years. So I'd like to think that if we want to go all electric, we can do that in conjunction with making sure we have electricity. The second is, we'd be happy to buy a battery for our system, but no one wants to sell us one. Sunrun will not sell us an add-on battery for our solar edge because they want to install greenfield systems. So if you want people to go all electric, I think we have to step up our game and make it plausible for them to do that. Because right now, I don't, I'd be happy to pay money for a battery, but I'm not gonna go without, without power for five days a year where I can't cook simply to save a bit of carbon. And we are in the Eco 100 plan and all that. So thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other public comments since I reopened it? Okay. Thank you very much, Jan. Thanks for your presentation. And we look forward to more great and better, even better stuff in the future.
Mr. Mayor, you have one more hand up. Okay, Christie.
Yes, I'm wondering if we can become a public comment on other items at this time.
No, please wait for the other item that, comment when it comes up. Thank you. Okay. All right, there being no more. Thank you very much, Jan. And we'll move on to our next item.
Thank you for having us here. We really enjoy working with Portola Valley and your support here, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jan.
Keep up the great work. Thank you.
Okay, next is a presentation from the Race and Equity Committee regarding a land acknowledgement.
And we're going to turn that over to our illustrious chair, Kim, who will be making the presentation this evening. Kim, all yours.
Hi, thank you. I really don't have a presentation tonight, but I have the memo that I sent. And so I could share my screen for that. Sound good?
That sounds great.
Okay, um, in November twenty twenty, Brandon Alvarez was an intern who created a land acknowledgement statement. And it was, it was approved in November twenty twenty by the town council. And when the Race and Equity Committee formed, what it wanted to do is pick up where Brandon left off in that work. And so we have two suggestions tonight, recommendations that we would like to see the, the council implement. The first is a revised statement. The, the first reason that we wanted to revise it is there is some dispute among the Aloney groups about which land we reside on here. And so what we want to do is be inclusive of all of the all of the peoples here that, whose land we reside upon and not just choose one. And the other thing is that the statement, I'll scroll down here. We've revised the statement just to some of the language, we wanted to soften and make a little bit more specific. Some of the language we wanted to see that it might be a little bit more timeless, you know, certain words become popular. And so this, this is our revised statement. Should I read it or do you want to just read it silently?
I'm wanting to read it.
Okay.
Spent so much time working on it.
Okay, um, so our revised statement is, um, the town of Portola Valley acknowledges the colonial history of this land we dwell upon. The unceded territory of the Muekma Aloney, Ramatis Aloney and Tamian Nation, who endured a human and cultural genocide that included removal from their lands and disrupted their sacred relationship to the land. Portola Valley recognizes that we profit from the commodification of land seized from indigenous peoples and now bear the social and ecological consequences. We seek to understand the impact of these legacies on all beings and to find ways to make repair. So how about if I pause there before I go on to the, to the second item for in the recommendation? And see if you have any questions or comments. And I would say, um, one of the of course, like any, um, I've been thinking of the Pledge of Allegiance. It can become a routine that doesn't have any meaning. But the idea behind this is for us to remember and keep it in our minds and with a, with a commitment to make repair and find ways to do that. So that's the intention behind the statement. It's not about being politically correct. It's about remembering and living forward how we might make repair. Any questions or comments on that?
Any questions? Nope.
Okay. So the second recommendation we have is to implement the use of the land acknowledgement statement in two ways. The first is to publish it on the town's website. And we recommend publishing it in the footer of the town's website. So it's on every page. And also to begin the practice of reading the land acknowledgement at the beginning of all town public meetings, which would mean the council committees and other events. In the future, we want to come back to the council and recommend ways that we can make repair. Residents could either voluntarily, things that they could do voluntarily, or there might be some things that the council could take action on. But we're not at that stage yet. Any comments or questions?
Any questions? No, thank you. Nope, I think there are none.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So Jeremy, before we get into public comment and discussion, the, for tonight, this is just receiving the presentation, right? We're not taking action on this site. We'll bring it back to a future agenda for action.
Yeah, I think the way that it's worded, we'll do that. So we'll just do that at November ninth. So it'll be the formal action item. And we'll move from there if that works. Excuse me, the twenty-six, my apologies, October twenty-sixth.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Nope. Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Kim. Thanks for the presentation. And we will
Thank you.
back for action at a future meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item five, tonight's consent agenda. The consent agenda is acted on as one item unless council member pulls an individual item for discussion. But the public may comment on any item on the consent agenda. Is there any public comment on any item on the consent agenda?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if it's through the chair. I did, this is Melissa Thurman, Town Clerk. I did just want to make one comment regarding item five E, the grand jury report for public records. There is a section R three. It's the third recommendation in the letter. The R three states by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, the city council should consider directing city staff to place information about how to access public records on the homepage of the city's official website. We listed in the report, this had already been done because in September, we did implement a link through our records repository search, which is Laserfish for members of the public to search. It has since this packet was published, that link has since broken and it's due to an iframe issue with our vendor. And so they're currently working on it. They do expect that it might be fixed by November. So we are going to change this language just to say that it is, we, this recommendation is in the process of being implemented.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Yes, there is one. Christie Corley.
Hi, I'm just wondering why we're waving the first read of these items. And usually you would have a first and second read. And we're waving the first read and, and passing it as if it's a second read. So do the, does the public have enough presented, I, I believe the public should be able to hear first read items two times as.
Christie, which item are you talking about?
Um, it's the wave public hearing, wave first reading to introduce the ordinance adopting.
We're on item five right now. So we'll, we'll be getting to that next. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, no other hands raised. Would any council member like to pull an item? Nope, is there a motion then? Move by Marian.
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Moved by Marian, seconded by Sarah.
Councilmember House.
Hi.
Councilmember Derwin.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke. Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us then to item six, pair of public hearings. The first is on an ordinance adopting the The first is on an ordinance adopting the 2022 California Building Standards Code with local amendments.
And we're going to turn that over to Laura and Brandy. Go for it, all yours.
And actually, could I ask Cara, before we get into the discussion, to just explain to us what waiving the first reading means and what the process is for adopting an ordinance like this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kristy, for raising that question. All ordinances need to have a first reading, which is an introduction of the ordinance. And then on the second reading or second hearing, the council formally adopts the ordinance for approval. So all ordinances, unless it qualifies under an emergency exception, must have two hearings or meetings where public members can discuss the item. What the state law also requires is that at each of these hearings, the council must technically read the entire version of the ordinance, word for word, unless that process is waived. And so typically, you know, we have ordinances that are 5, 10, 50 pages long. And so it's been common practice in virtually all cities to waive that formal sort of antiquated requirement that the entire ordinance be verbally read out loud before adopting. So that's the reference to waiver in this, in the staff report that I believe Kristy was referencing. But we will be having two hearings on these, this ordinance and on the second ordinance also. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, with that, over to you guys.
But thanks. Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, Laura Russell, Planning and Building Director, giving the presentation tonight are Brandy DeGarmo and Ron LaFrance. So we'll turn it over to them.
And I'm going to be sharing the presentation. So Ron will be starting, and then I'll be jumping in on the green building amendments.
Good evening. My name is Ron LaFrance. I'm the consulting building official for the town. And we are, as soon as I can get this thing set back up, thank you. We're going to be presenting on the proposed amendments to the 2022 California Building Code. Next slide, please. So we're going to give our presentation. Council will have the opportunity to ask staff questions, opportunity for public comment, and then finally, council discussion and decision. Next slide, please. Okay, so moving codes are established by the state. They're adopted every three years. They're published on July 1st of the code year. This is, we're looking at the 2022 codes. The state published them July 1. It allows jurisdictions, six months, to write amendments, local amendments to the code and adopt the state code and those local amendments prior to January 1st, 2023, when the state codes take effect. If you, if a jurisdiction is going to formally adopt amendments, they have to formally adopt this code. If they have no amendments to the state code, technically, they don't need to adopt the code. But they're still required to enforce the current building state codes. The adoption of the Building Standards Code and local amendments is designed to occur prior to the January 1, 2023, so that there's no potential lapse in historic amendments that have been adopted at each code cycle. However, having saying that, a jurisdiction can amend the code between, during kind of what they call mid-code cycle. Next slide, please. Okay, so Munich Code Title 1504 was reorganized this year. Historically, there have been four sections. The first section is the Building Code section. That section simply states that the whatever year state code is formerly the Building Code of the town of Portola Valley. The next section was amendments to the Building Code. The section after that was the administrative information. And then there was a section establishing requirements for temporary occupancies. There were, this, this is a very healthy code amendment. There's 80 amendments. A lot of them are duplicative, and that's because there is a residential code and a building code. And the residential code covers one and two family buildings and townhomes, accessory structures to those buildings. The building code, it covers all other buildings. And so in specific to the wildland urban interface requirements, it appears in both codes. And so both codes need to be amended accordingly, which is how you get to 80. There's realistically about 45 amendments, which is still a healthy amendment. And under the historic organization of this title, a design designer would have to scroll through approximately 40 pages of code, looking to see if the plumbing code was amended, as an example. So what staff did was we split up the title by code parts. So there is a section for Building Code Amendment, section for Residential Code Amendment, section for Plumbing Code Amendments, et cetera. The, where there are no code amendments, the section has been established, but just held in reserve. The existing administrative and temporary occupancy sections have been updated with, consistent with current code, and then have been folded in as local code amendments. Next slide, please. Okay, so the Fire District, after the December 2021 adoption of the code amendments related to wildland urban interface, that is kind of referred to as wooey, and I will refer to it as wooey henceforward. One was, so we worked collaboratively with the Fire District, discussed their recommendations based on those amendments. They had four of these recommendations. One was to remove the exception for fire sprinklers and telecommunications buildings. Staff checked with town council, Cara, to be exact, not the city council, or town council, to make sure that the telecommunications buildings do not fall under California or state, excuse me, California federal regulations. And if they fall under California federal regulations jurisdictions, then the local jurisdiction cannot amend the code. But Cara said that it does not, and so the code has been amended to remove telecommunications buildings as as exempt from fire sprinklers. Similarly, the Fire District recommended the removal of fire sprinklers from, for agricultural buildings. That is an exception. Under the state code, the Fire District's concern is agriculture buildings, which store things like grain and farm equipment, the potential for fire there, and structure fires burn hotter than wildland fires, and their concern is an uncontrolled fire in an agricultural building could start a wildland fire. And so they requested the sprinklers be removed, the exception for sprinklers in agriculture buildings be removed, which has also been done. Their next recommendation was all detached structures, subject to a building permit, be required to meet the wooey requirements. That has also been folded into the amendments. And it's set up now that all accessory structures, detached accessory structures, subject to permit, are required to meet all of the wooey requirements. And, and all structures, regardless of permit, within 30 feet of a property line are also required to meet wooey requirements. Finally, there was some questions in the early part of this year regarding columns, exterior columns, supporting roof structures for pergolas and outdoor rooms and things of that nature. And the state code and our local amendments were silent on it. It said that the exterior siding of a building has to be non-combustible materials, but said nothing about the exterior columns. The Fire District requested that the columns either be non-combustible or wrapped with non-combustible material. Their concern again is fire traveling up, travels up the column into the roof structure and catches the roof structure on fire. Next slide, please. So I have a slight correction. As I said, there are 80 code amendments. There was the state change code numbers on code amendments we did in December. There was a lot of coordination. And this one slipped by, so you'll see what has struck out. Ornamental landscape structures, tell us gazebos are exempt from permit if they're within, if they're not within 50 feet of an applicable building. The Fire District had requested that be removed. We had agreed to remove it. I just, it just didn't get done in the ordinance. This will be corrected in the second reading. Next slide, please. Okay, so the 2019 amendments, just for historical perspective, largely dealt with administrative elements, emergency escape rescue windows from basements, and then the wildland urban interface, the wooey home pardoning amendments. Next slide, please. So staff has lumped the proposed amendments for to the 2022 Building Standards Code into administrative, life safety, structural, wooey, and green building. Next slide, please. So the life safety amendments start with automatic sprinklers. They establish automatic sprinklers, consistent with before, based on the 50% rule. And then also removing the exception for telecommunications buildings. And the exception for ag buildings is discussed previously. There was an existing emergency escape opening in basement amendment that has been carried forward. And then in the 2022 residential, actually both codes, there is there's certain conditions in which a basement emergency escape and rescue opening can be reduced in size. And the, the primary function of the building codes is to get people out of buildings in an emergency and safely out of buildings. And first responders into buildings when necessarily, when necessary, and specific to basements with the first responder down in a basement, potentially fighting a fire with the fire above. If they get trapped down in the basement, they have a way out. So there's two or three sections on that, that the amendments essentially delete those sections, thus mandating a minimum square, 5.7 square feet of openable area for emergency escape and rescue. Finally, energy storage systems, ESS, as I'll refer to them, moving forward. They are essentially batteries, the battery systems. Batteries, if they're damaged, either in transit, during installation, can be subject to thermal runaway. And what the code, the way the code is set up is it establishes a whole bunch of requirements that provide safety for the building occupants if there's a problem with the, with the battery systems. And one of the most important ones is that the batteries cannot be installed in an occupied area, habitable space. The, there is, at the very beginning of the section on ESS, it says if the battery is labeled and tested to a standard and installed per manufacturer's specifications, then the rest of that section, of that whole section on ESS, don't have to be complied with. And there's some very important elements to that section. And so the, one of being that you cannot install them in an habitable space. So we have removed that, that statement from the code so that the batteries, just to maintain that they can't be installed in habitable space, and the other safety precautions are there. Please understand, this is nothing against the batteries. They're wonderful systems. It is relatively new technology, and the codes are still trying to determine how best to install these safely while this technology continues to evolve. Next slide, please. Okay, so there's a structural amendment. It occurs both, again, in the residential code and the building code, and it prohibits use of several brace, wall bracing designs. Brace wall designs are kind of generically known as structural walls, and they resist lateral forces such as seismic and wind. And the recommendation is from the Tri-Chapter Uniform Code Committee, which is local, the three local chapters in the Bay Area. Engineers, building officials get together and decide on the stuff. But the, the basis of the recommendation is on these different brace walls' performance during the Loma Prieta quake. Excuse me, not the Loma Prieta quake, the Northridge quake in 1994. And that, kind of the end result of that is certain brace wall types have been removed from the code to not allow their use. Next slide, please. Okay, so the wooey amendments. So the amendments re-adopt everything that was adopted in 2021, except for where those amendments are now included as minimum state standards. An example of that is woo events in the 2019 Residential and Building Code. Woo events were not mandated if the attic area had an automatic fire sprinkler. The 2022 code has removed that, that allowance. And it just says you have to put in woo events, which is consistent with what was done in December. And so that amendment is no longer there. The other significant change is decks. Decks are no longer mandated to be non-combustible material. This is based on considerable community feedback regarding the cost and the cost associated with doing this and the structural requirements to effectively have non-combustible material on the decking. So now all decking material must meet state minimum requirements for ignition resistant material. And the decks, whether it's attached or detached, they have to comply regardless of distance to a applicable building. Next slide, please. Okay, detached accessory structures. This is again based on the Fire District's recommendation. As I said earlier, all accessory subjects are subject to the wooey requirements. And accessory structures, regardless of building permit requirement, closer than 30 feet to a property line must meet wooey requirements. The last item, again, as mentioned above, exterior columns, supporting roof structures and trellises. The, the columns now have to be either non-combustible or wrapped. The only exception to this is a trellis that is detached, less than 120, 120 square feet, which is exempt from building permit. However, if it is closer than 30 feet to the property line, then it does have to meet the requirements of non-combustible, wrapped with non-combustible material. Next slide, please. And these are the green building amendments that Brandy will be discussing. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. So at the August 10th, 2022 council meeting, staff presented an updated green building ordinance based on the direction given at the May 11th meeting. That update included requirements for all new construction to be all electric buildings and electrification requirements to start the process of converting existing residential multi-fuel buildings to all electric buildings. After that August 10th council meeting, staff and the town attorney met with breach code experts to better understand the current process for applying for approval from the California Energy Commission, including any needed cost effectiveness studies. Staff learned that the CEC is recommending that all electric building standards be included in the CalGreen section of the building code rather than the energy code as the measure is determining a fuel type rather than applying increased energy efficiency. Additionally, the use of standalone ordinances for adopting green building standards has changed over time. Many jurisdictions, including Portola Valley, proactively adopted standalone ordinances that established green building standards prior to the creation and state adoption of CalGreen. Due to the building, they adopted these standalone ordinances due to the building codes at the time not addressing the subject matter. However, since the creation and implementation of CalGreen, the existing and proposed standards fit more logically as CalGreen. existing and proposed standards fit more logically as Cal Green amendments. Given the CEC guidance, standard practices and the benefits, staff's updated recommendation is to incorporate the existing and proposed requirements of chapter fifteen point ten green building as amendments to the twenty twenty-two Californian green, California green building standards code, otherwise known as Cal Green. In this update, staff worked to make the green building amendments both easier to implement and more consistent. With incorporation of the green building amendments into Cal Green, all the language and definitions now aligned with the building code, plumbing code and energy code. In addition, the definition of new residential construction was changed to include the fifty percent rule language for the planning director's inspection to be consistent with the home pardoning ordinance. We also, this amendment also included extending third party verification for all green, all for Cal Green measures to all building types. Previously, their third party verification was only required for commercial construction because those measures were verified by build at green, Greenpoint Raiders. We included this third party verification to ensure that all of the Cal Green measures were implemented. And now we're going to review the specific changes that, the amendments that were made within Cal Green, just as a review. So we added our all electric building construction was added for all construction types with certain exceptions for cooking needs for new construction per the building officials' direction. In addition, any new public agency buildings have a potential exception as needed for emergency services. The amendments also include adding EV ready charging spaces, charging spaces to all the new residential construction. And EV ready means that a charging, a charging station can be plugged in rather than in the previous version of the ordinance. It was just, the requirement was for conduit and electrical panel space. The amendments also clarify that ADUs that require parking should be EV ready if convenient and at the discretion of the building official. One additional exception was for ADOs to only have to meet the requirements of the applicable section for the mandatory requirements for solar ready buildings. As discussed at the August tenth study session, staff has recommended the addition of the, these electrification requirements for existing buildings based on building permit scope of work. These requirements are to prepare existing buildings for future electrification when it is most cost effective during additions, remodels or repairs where a contractor is already being hired specifically to work on the building's electrical systems. Council received a letter today from the Campaign for Fossil Free Buildings in Silicon Valley with the items for consideration that are outlined on this slide. Staff would like to help the council and the public better understand the approach in the recommended amendments and how they align with the goal of starting to prepare existing buildings for future electrification when it is most feasible and cost effective. Item one for consideration. Staff had concluded that pre, pre electrification amendment, the pre electrification amendment to include wiring a current water heater location to allow for installation of a heat pump water heater in an emergency repair system in existing buildings was more appropriate due to several factors. And as, as I go through these items, I'll refer back to this. So this is this is the item that we're talking about, that wiring a current water heater location to allow for the installation of heat pump water heater in an emergency repair situation. So the, those are the amendments I'm referring back to. So those factors were that water, water heater replacement is often done in an emergency situation. And requiring the replacement with the heat pump water heater would require both an electrician and a plumber to complete this work. Additionally, a property owner could go several days to weeks without hot water while trying to coordinate the work for the conversion to a heat pump water heater. Pre-wiring when an electrician is already there is more cost effective and prepares the water heater for a burnout situation. Heat pump water heater conversions require advanced planning for space consideration, venting and condensation disposal, which is not allowed to go into a regular drain per Westpac sanitary. Staff is also concerned that this requirement will result in permit avoidance and potential life safety issues. Staff is planning to work with the sustainability committee to promote pre-burnout planning and conversion through education and outreach on incentive programs such as those mentioned by Peninsula Clean Energy. So item two for consideration. As staff concluded that the amendment to require, this amendment up here, the amendment to require installation of a reverse cycle AC condensing heat pump unit to be installed instead of a traditional air conditioning consent, condensing unit. At the time of installation, a replacement of an AC unit was more appropriate and cost effective as the cost is incurred when one is already committed to making that purchase and expanding the additional energy costs. Additionally, requiring heat pump AC prepares for furnace, for the furnace going out as the unit is set up to run in reverse for heating. So you are preloading the whole system. In addition, a feasibility study by PCE showed that heat pump HVAC units are not yet cost effective unless you're also planning to put solar. Unless you're also planning to include solar. In addition, the typical load for a heat pump HVAC system in a single family home is five times the typical load of a heat pump water heater. And there is concern over the ability of the electrical infrastructure to handle this additional load. Item three, well pools have been addressed in the proposed amendments. Staff and the town attorney recommend the edits outlined here to clarify that no new gas infrastructure for outdoor equipment. So in addition to these amendments, staff is asking the council to revert, to refer to existing carryover requirements from the last green building ordinance to the sustainability committee for, for review. So the gray water ready infrastructure measure and the reduction of potable water use on turf were both inclusions in that last ordinance that were developed by the previous iteration of the sustainability committee, which was the water conservation committee. And so staff felt it was appropriate for those measures to go back to the sustainability committee for review and potential update. But is including them in this amendment so that they carry for, forward in the meantime. And in addition, the sustainability committee is currently working on a review of the water, the Wilo, which is our water conservation and landscaping ordinance. And so we, we thought that they could look at these two things as part of that review. There is one additional deferred amendment, and that's solar PV and solar thermal readiness. Readiness, staff has deferred the inclusion of these two measures until further study can be done on them once cost effectiveness studies are available and staff has reviewed, reviewed them. So with that, this is the recommended council action and I'll turn it back over to Ron. If you have anything to add or we can take questions at the time, this time from the council.
Okay, thank you, Brandy and Ron.
Question, yeah, for Ron, I think. So with this new requirement for non combustible columns for roof structures, I presume then that means that heavy timber is no longer allowed?
Correct. And it's the, it's just the columns. It's not the roof structure itself. It's just the columns. The, the, the roof structure and the underside of the roof structure falls into a different section of the code. But yes, heavy timber is out unless it's wrapped with a non combustible material.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ann?
I have more than one question. So I read that the fire sprinklers are only required in ADUs that exceed twelve hundred square feet or are built within the setback as defined by the Portola Valley UniCode. But then didn't you say that in the wooey, all accessory structures, all detached structures? Do they all have to have fire sprinklers? Would an ADU?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, got it. All right. Now that it says fences or gates located within ten feet of a building must be non combustible. So what triggers that requirement? I mean, if you're doing a little remodel, does it trigger it or does it have to be the fifty percent rule or new?
It would be a new fence or gate.
Okay. And does an eighty, a new ADU, do they have to do an upgrade to the main electrical panel for a new ADU?
A new ADU would have its own electric panel and be fed either independently from PG&E slash PCE, excuse me. And or fed from the main house panel, depending on the, the way they want, the property owner wants it organized.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see the other, another one. Oh, that when Brandy was talking about the solar PV being deferred. Is that, would that be triggered by the new build or fifty percent rule? The solar PV requirement that you are deferred?
So the energy code, the solar readiness area from the energy code is two hundred and fifty square feet. The, the current town ordinance is five hundred square feet. And the fifty percent rule establishes for both wooey and the green building requirements. If you exceed the fifty percent, you trigger kind of all of that. And that would include the solar readiness from the energy code.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I have a follow up on Mary Ann's questions regarding bring fire sprinklers for ADUs. Is there still in a situation where a state approved ADU can be built without fire sprinklers? Or is that no longer the case?
Okay, that, that is a great question and a somewhat complicated one. So the, the, the buildings manufactured homes which are under the state jurisdiction for the construction of the building. The foundation and connections of the utility are under the local jurisdiction's authority. However, if the local jurisdiction has, hasn't a fire sprinkler requirement that, that does need to be built into the manufactured home.
So that's, that's the only exemption, exception at this point. What's the fire sprinklers for ADU?
Yeah, that the manufactured home is not an exception. They would have to put it into, into the, into the ADU.
They would have to build it in, yeah.
Yes.
So I, I will also add that the state does have sort of a carryover exception in the ADU law that states that the main building is not sprinkled, the ADU does not have to be sprinkled. However, because this is in the wooey and because of because new construction of ADUs is adding a sprinkler is so nominal. The recommendation here is that ADUs that are newly constructed should be sprinkled.
Thank you.
I, um, where, where can somebody go back to where there the comments about how new fences or gate need to be non combustible and this that somehow on the material?
I think I have the page.
So I guess maybe it's not in the slide, maybe it's just in the materials, but and what would trigger that at any time, any resident in town is updating their gate or fixing their gate or, or fence? If you just elaborate there on that. Or is it only related to doing a remodel project?
So if you're remodeling the interior house and even if you trigger the fifty percent rule, but you're not touching the fence, you don't have to do anything to the fence or the gate. If you are remodeling your house, tearing down your fence and building a new fence, then the fence and the gate are subject to the wooey requirements. And then likewise with the new structure, a brand new structure from ground up. If you build a fence, then the, the requirement is there. And then I have to make a quick, I have to make a quick adjustment to my comment about fire sprinklers and ADUs. So ADUs are technically one and two family buildings. And there's an exception for an automatic fire sprinkler. But automatic accessory dwelling units provided all of the following, and I'm reading from the code, so please excuse my, my verbiage. The unit meets the definition of an ADU as defined in government code section six, five, eight, five, two point two. The existing primary residence does not have an automatic fire sprinkler. The accessory detached unit does not exceed twelve hundred square feet. And the unit is on the same lot as the primary residence. And I apologize for getting that wrong, but there is that exception.
That's what I was thinking about him. The main house doesn't have them, right?
Thank you. Well, I had to still put him in.
Back, back to the, the fence gate question I had. So what I was actually asking is if you are not doing a construction project of any kind on your home or an ADU and you are repairing or replacing a fence, does this rule apply? That's the question.
Yes.
No repair, any repair or replacement of any fence or gate in town would have to be non combustible materials.
Just ten feet from the building.
Yeah. And, and I'm sorry to add on to this within our
Sorry, what was that?
Within the first ten feet from the building, the first ten feet, the gate or fence attached to the building for ten feet away from the building is non combustible and then has to meet minimum code requirements.
And, okay, did, to clarify again, does it have to be attached or you're saying just within ten feet? You said both there, so I was confused.
Any fence or gate within ten feet.
Okay.
And to, to elaborate on this, there is, our fence code already has a section that talks about what is maintenance and repair and how much of it has to be replaced, can be replaced before it becomes a new fence. So that section of the code would govern within our zoning code related to fences. So that's how we would decide whether it was considered a new fence. And then also just for clarification, this is a requirement that was implemented in the last code site or the last code amendments. This is not new to this set of code amendments.
Okay. My other question relates to green building codes in terms of all electric builds with no exceptions. But then there was comments about cooking. So could you elaborate more on that? And I guess I'm asking because I know there are people that are very passionate about their, you know, gas stove and being able to barbecue and whatnot. So I, I kind of want to understand what the distinction there is.
Yeah, so the, okay, let me, let me figure out how to say this. The way the ordinance is written, the amendment is written, excuse me, is that if you're building a new building, it will be all electric. And it's very specific in saying that it includes state stoves, decorative fireplaces, things, things of that nature within the building. There is also a chunk of this exception of, of the, and I'm trying to find it as I talk, which is never good. But there is an, an additional amendment to the code that talks about hardship or infeasibility exemption. It applies specifically to the subsections that were amended slash added to the Cal Green code, which are the, the, the all electric, these things that Brandy and I have been talking about. And the hardship needs in feasibility has a series of requirements associated with it as to why you can't possibly do a, a, just let's take it beyond a stove and all electric building. And it could be that the the existing building is being fed by PG&E with a very small transmission wire that's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to increase because they've got to pull it two and a half blocks up the street to change, to change the wire to get to the, the house. And so that would be a situation where and, and the all electric loads exceed the amount that that wire can carry. And that would be a situation where staff would look at it and say, okay, kind of question, how much can you actually do? And then have them do that much, that much scope of work. And then have them do that much, that much scope of work. Uh, and then if the stove isn't something that works within that boundary, then they would have a gas stove. Does, does that answer your question? Because it's not super straightforward.
Yeah, it sounds like what, what the exception is that you're describing is more of a cost burden, um, and anything else. So to, to be able to power the house with um, all-electric, you're saying that's when the exception will trigger. It's not really related to necessarily cooking.
It's not necessarily related to specific to cooking, no.
Um, if, if I may, so, um, when we first started talking about elec- all-electric buildings, I, I believe it was last October, um, staff was given direction by the council that they did not want to make exceptions for cooking or um, gas fireplaces or outdoor uses because of the environmental um, impacts of having natural gas. And so that's when staff um, included these amendments with the only exception for cooking being in a commercial situation. Does that, does that more answer your question, Sarah?
Um, it, it, it helps refresh my memory of the background, and I guess it, this is an example for me anyhow, um, of ha- having multiple reviews of this, some being study sessions and some being ordinance reviews are helpful because, um, you know, as you think through things, um, it gives you a chance to um, expand, at least for me, my thinking on some of these topics. So, thank you.
Uh, Jeff, I can't see you on the screen right now, but do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I will, I mean, I have some comments I'll make during our discussion.
I have a, a question on, um, Ron, I think you were talking about, um, non-permit requiring structures in the thirty-foot setback, um, and that they need to comply with wooey code. Um, if they don't require a permit, how do we enforce that? If you're not, how do you make sure that they're compliant?
Uh, that would be a complaint-based system.
Okay, so if, if a neighbor sees a new structure in the thirty-foot setback, then we'd expect they would call us and but they, but they're not going to know of it as sprinklers or whatever inside it without going in there. So for a lot of this stuff, they wouldn't have any way of knowing necessarily.
Right, so, um, just for clarity, um, a structure that would be exempt from permit would be uh, less than a hundred and twenty square feet in, in overall size. So, um, I, I usually refer to sheds, um, but you know, could be an animal shade structure or something of that sort. Um, that would be built, you know, someplace uh, closer than thirty feet, and the neighbor could report that to, they would report it to code enforcement, and then, uh, code enforcement would take the lead and go out and investigate.
And so what are, what are the requirements? What, what type of code requirements would then apply to that shed?
Uh, non-combustible siding, Class A roof, no wood allowed, um, the, any windows would be, um, dual plane with paint with one pane tempered and, um, the door being a solid core twenty-minute rated door.
And to elaborate on that, um, this was, uh, came originally from the Fire Marshal as a recommendation to have all accessory buildings um, would comply with wooey standards, including those that don't require a permit. Um, and that, um, we interpreted, um, Ron and I as being, um, a, a very strong recommendation. And so to temper that just a little bit, we came up with this alternative that if it's within the thirty-foot setback area, um, then it would is not within that thirty-foot area uh, that did not require a building permit that setback area by doing this.
Okay, I think I got what you were saying there. You're breaking up a little bit, Laura.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, so, um, got it. So if, if neighbors see people building non-bunker sheds in their thirty-foot setback, then they should let us know. Um, okay, further council questions? Yes, Marianne?
Was there any consideration given, excuse me, to also requiring solar and battery storage for all-electric builds?
Uh, yes, yes, Marianne, and actually, um, in one of the, in the last, um, council study session, we had discussed pre-wiring for battery storage, and that's actually, um, included in this coast code cycle. Ron can speak more to that, and there are a certain amount of solar, um, requirements as well. Our, our previous ordinance just augmented that to require more, and that's something that we're hoping to bring back to the council again, once we have those, once those cost-effectiveness studies are available. But Ron, do you want to speak to what requirements are in the, are already in Cal Green for those two things?
Uh, yes, so the, um, pre-wiring for, uh, ESS uh, is actually in the energy code, and it requires conduit and, uh, wiring. I, I forget the size, minimum size, but it requires that to a location where batteries ostensibly would be installed. Um, and that's, again, just to move, move the, the state forward with all-electric housing.
But there isn't a mandate to install solar and battery backup?
Uh, if I may, Marianne?
You may.
The current energy code for a new construction, it is virtually impossible to make a new house or building comply without adding solar, at least to new residents. Um, it's, uh, the, the requirement, basically, if almost everybody uses the modeling requirement, and, uh, and in the modeling requirement, you, you, you just can't find another, other ways to save energy to, to bypass the solar requirements. In practice, the energy code pretty much does require solar on any new building, a new residential building.
I mean, I think most people do it, right?
Unless you have trees over your house.
You can get an exception for certain things, including shading, but, but it's, it's rare.
And then I had a question, um, regarding the staff's response to the letter from the campaign for fossil-free buildings in Silicon Valley. I, I know they're, they're suggesting that we, um, require heat pump water heaters whenever you do an addition or an alteration project, and heat pump HVAC systems, but what about requiring it for new builds?
So the, the Cal Green, uh, amendments, proposed amendments require an all-electric house and, uh, or an all-electric structure, excuse me. And, um, the way they achieve that is with, uh, heat pump, water heater and, uh, heat pump space heating.
So it is already there?
It is. The, the alternative to heating, uh, with all-electric is resistance heaters, uh, and they consume a lot of energy. And, uh, as Mr. Alf has mentioned, it, it just, it doesn't work from the compliance, energy compliance perspective.
If you want to make the software laugh, put in an electric resistance water heater in.
Um, and then the pool and outdoor equipment paragraph, haven't we already decided that we are not going to allow gas in fire pits and grills? Didn't we already talk about that?
Yes, and it was, it was, um, just a case where if someone had applied for that as a separate permit, so in new construction, it wouldn't have been allowed, but if someone came to apply for a, a permit to install a gas line to use it for a fire pit or a heater or an outdoor kitchen, that's where it didn't specifically preclude that.
And if somebody's putting in a pool, can they put in a gas heater, or do they have to do an electric?
They can use, um, solar thermal, or Ron, can you speak to that, or, uh?
Yes, so they, they would be required to use a heat pump or a combination solar thermal and heat pump.
Okay, so they, they can't use gas?
They cannot.
Thank you.
So that, 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 um, language that we added was really just to clarify the, um, the outdoor amenities, so specifically the kitchen, grills, pool spots. We, it really was pools and were already kind of covered, but we wanted to just clarify it.
Okay.
So I wanted to ask a follow-up question about this slide, um, and so, and this slide and the previous slide. That was on the previous slide, if you could go back up. Yeah, in terms of all of these, um, items here, has, has there been a assessment of impact to cost on projects? Like, is that part of when you guys do this overview? Is that part of the analysis?
Ron, go, go ahead.
Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to take it. I apologize. Yes, so the, um, uh, the easiest way to explain this is that the cost associated, uh, for new construction, the cost associated with the installation of the equipment, is, is already built into whether the equipment is gas-fired or, or electric-based. Um, the electric-based water, uh, heat pump water heaters and furnaces, um, are, uh, there, there is an increased cost for those equipment, pieces of equipment, but as a percentage of the overall cost of the structure, uh, it is nominal, and the labor, they're doing the labor anyways. Um, and then when you, um, when you combine that with, uh, effectively the state mandating that photovoltaic put on the roof, he put on the roof, the photovoltaic, uh, generation, the site generation, uh, kind of offsets the additional cost, uh, additional electrical consumption, the cost associated with additional electrical consumption. And that's, that's how it becomes cost-effective.
Well, I'll, I'll add one thing to that. The, the California Energy Code actually requires that any, any energy, the energy code itself and any reach codes demonstrate cost-effectiveness of the measure over the life of either the measure or the building. Um, the energy code, the California code now includes solar because it's been shown that photovoltaics are cost-effective over the life of the, of the full photovoltaic system. And the all-electric construction has been shown to be cost-effective over the lifetime of the systems, uh, partly because you eliminate all the costs of piping gas through the house.
Any more council questions? Okay, I will go to public comment, and I think you have a public comment on this item. Okay, if you could come up to the microphone, then please. Um, and then we will go to Zoom questions after, so raise your hands now.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I can't, is that microphone on? Because I can't hear him.
Hang on a sec, Jeff.
Start over, okay. Uh, honorable mayor and council members, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my eight-year-old daughter, the world's youth, future generations, and all plant and animal life on our one and only planet Earth. I'm here to ask you to take bolder action on climate change. We are facing one of the greatest challenges of our lifetime. As a result of human-caused global warming, climate change is upon us. The devastating effects can be seen and felt everywhere. There's no need to go into details as the increasing frequency and intensity of wildfires and extreme weather events are obvious. We know what to do. Stop burning fossil fuels and emitting greenhouse gases. Decarbonizing existing buildings is one way, way that Portola Valley can greatly reduce its greenhouse gas emissions. So I urge you to please consider the full model reach code for existing buildings provided by the Bay Area Reach Code Team. While I support the excellent proposal for all-electric new construction, I would like to see the town adopt a much stronger code for existing buildings, which comprise the overwhelming majority of the town's building stock. Such a code for existing buildings would, one, require the installation of heat pump water heaters and heat pump HVAC, HVAC systems as replacements for gas-powered devices during addition and alteration projects. And two, pools and outdoor equipment in residential buildings would need to use electricals or electric or solar pool heating, and any new gas infrastructure would be prohibited for backyard uses such as fire pits, grills, and pools. There will be challenges, but decarbonizing our existing buildings is key to effective climate change mitigation. And there are many co-benefits of doing so, health, environmental justice, and jobs, to name a few. Should council adopt these policies, history will look fondly on you for taking Portola Valley on this courageous path towards real climate action. You will be part of the solution and in, and an example for other municipalities. A recent article in Scientific American exposes a false social reality and belief that merely forty percent of the population supports major climate mitigation policies, when in fact, a recent Yale poll shows that close to eighty percent of the population actually supports such actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any hands raised?
First hand is David Cardinal.
Hi, uh, thanks. Uh, part of this is maybe a little repetitive, but while I think you've done a great job of analyzing the cost analysis for new construction, I don't think honestly anybody's done a job of analyzing the cost for people who are tweaking or doing something with their current infrastructure. In our case, for example, we have a tiny, uh, electrical feed that we've had for fifty years. We have eight kilowatts of solar. If we wanted to get a Tesla, we'd have to upgrade the electrical feed. Okay, um, so then that, under this ordinance, I think, would make us go all-electric. So we'd need to, if we wanted to be able to cook or do anything when the power was out, put in a bunch of Tesla Power Walls, maybe fifty thousand dollars worth, or maybe somebody would sell us a single battery, except no one wants to. Um, and so it's just totally impractical. So we're not going to buy an electric car, for example, because it would cost us maybe fifty or a hundred thousand dollars under this ordinance to rewire and revamp our entire house. So I, I don't, I, I think that's misguided. I think we should aim for a better future, and we do. Um, but there's a lot of assumption that people in Portola Valley have infinite money to buy whatever they need to buy into the future. And I don't, I don't know that that's fair. Um, so I'd love to see it be a more balanced approach to reasonableness about if you want to do a small thing like upgrade your infrastructure, your, your panel to get a, a car, you don't have to rebuild your entire house. Thank you.
David?
Next speaker is Dashell Leeds.
Well, uh, my name is Dashell Leeds. I'm the conservation organizer for the Sierra Club Lumber Prieta chapter. Uh, we strongly support the adoption of Portola Valley's draft all-electric reach code for new construction. Uh, we think this is a really strong code. Um, it fits well within the current landscape for reach codes. You're, you're right in there with all-electric for new construction, which is the, the normal expected code for the cycle, and also just based on the severity of the climate crisis. Um, we do think the code could be improved with the additions, uh, and suggestions provided by the Fossil Free Buildings Campaign. Um, thank you so much for incorporating, um, some of those into the code or, or for the incorporating the third provision. Um, but for the first two provisions, it might be nice to direct the Sustainability Commission to review these proposed modifications, um, in addition to some of the water measures that they're already considering. Um, this could be a good way to keep these proposals on the table for consideration without necessarily having to modify your code during the first reading tonight. Um, so again, it's a really strong code. Uh, I hope that you do not add any further exemptions to the code. I'm actually really, really happy to see that this code is not bogged down with unnecessary exemptions. Um, as was discussed, as was discussed by staff earlier, um, the code already has a strong hardship and infeasibility exemption, uh, to be granted if an applicant can demonstrate hardship or infeasibility. And I think it's really important that the applicant be able to demonstrate these things through a process, rather than just having a blanket exemption that allows more new gas pipelines. And I'm going to talk a little bit about pipelines here because they, they really truly are awful. Um, they are leaking all the way from in our homes throughout the entire transit system through extraction. These leaks have been measured at rates of up to eight to nine percent, which makes this network a threat, a climate threat for as long as it exists with gas plumbing flowing through it. Um, the addition of gas pipelines makes new construction more expensive. And of course, gas pipelines are a public health hazard. There was a two thousand thirteen meta-analysis which found that children living in a home with gas cooking have a forty-two percent increased risk of having current asthma, twenty-four percent in- increased risk of lifetime asthma. Have a forty two percent increased risk of having current asthma, twenty four percent increased risk of lifetime asthma. And an overall thirty two percent increased risk of having current and lifetime asthma. And these are huge numbers and I think. If more folks just knew how dangerous our gas appliances really were, we wouldn't want to have them in our homes. So we know today, gas pipelines really do not have a viable future in our society. We know today that gas pipelines are going to be a burden that current and future generations will have to deal with. So I think anything that expands gas infrastructure. Is an extreme position. So thank you for taking the normal expected step in a climate crisis like this. It's a strong code. Let's move forward with it tonight and let's keep going to see how we can transition our society away from gas. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Diane Bailey.
Good evening, Mayor Hughes and council members, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Diane Bailey. I'm with the campaign for fossil free buildings in Silicon Valley. We're a coalition of thirty nine different groups working together to accelerate a phase out of fossil fuels from our homes and buildings. And we already sent written comments. So I'll try to be brief. We strongly support the staff proposed reach code and we're happy to see it moving forward. And so I'll just echo what my colleague Dashel Leeds has said. We're really pleased to see some, some minor items relating to existing buildings and we really appreciate. The inclusion of a provision preventing new gas lines for outdoor use. I really appreciate the consideration of the other additions that we propose to require the heat pump water heaters and heat pump HVAC. Systems for remodels. There are several other cities that are considering these items. But I do understand that there's was not a lot of time to fully evaluate these requests for inclusion here. So I really hope that you'll revisit this in the coming year. And refer that back to the commission and then act swiftly to protect residents from gas. It's really crucial to address the gas appliances and existing buildings because the gas presents a major health and safety risk to residents. We know that appliances are leaking methane gas even when they're turned off. And we know that the gas in our homes includes toxic chemicals like benzene. We know that the air pollution produced by gas appliances is collectively even higher than the pollution from cars. And we know that methane gas is also climate super pollutant and we're already feeling the impacts of climate change. And we know in our hearts and in our heads that much, much more needs to be done to respond to the climate crisis that we're in. Several homeowners have expressed concerns about electric appliances not working during power outages. So it's important to point out that new gas appliances also don't work during power outages. And that's because they're electronically controlled. And so if that resilience is desired, then, then batteries will be required to keep. The power on when the grid is down. And as far as the concerns about cost, there is a historic federal climate bill, the Inflation Reduction Act. That will invest billions of dollars into climate solutions like electrification. Over the next ten years, and this will help households save money by switching from gas to electric, essentially erasing any difference in cost. Going from gas to electric. It's essential that Portola Valley consider all reasonable measures to prevent new gap uses of gas and facilitate the necessary transition off of fossil fuels. Let's do our part towards a climate safe future. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Whitehair.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for you tonight. I am Robert Whitehair. I live in San Mateo, California. But I'm the co leader of the San Mateo Climate Action Team and which is affiliated with Fossil Free Buildings Campaign. We are very much in favor of what you have proposed tonight. Very much like the new buildings proposal by staff. Staff has done an excellent job of explaining. Explain what I think is very complicated. Issue and you've done a great job of explaining and making clear what you're proposing. We urge you to move forward with the ordinance for new buildings, but also to think about existing buildings as well. Earlier tonight, you honor the Ramatouche Aloney folks. The peoples for what they've done in their relationship to the land. Moving forward, one of the best ways to show a relationship to the land. Is to think about how natural gas is creating the worsening of the climate crisis. In my own home, we just upgraded it. We, I live in a seventy one year old house in San Mateo. We just replaced everything. We have a heat pump water heater, a heat pump for heating and cooling. An induction stove, which we absolutely love. And we have, we even have a gap for electric fireplace to replace the gas. It is from our point, point of view, it is a much better way of living. It's much more in, in conjunction in the relationship to the land and that's why we did it. Finally, I'll say that you are wise to adopt these ordinances for new construction. We paid a premium because we live in an existing building. Where we had to do some rewiring, some other things they would, would not have had to have done in a new building. So congratulations on moving forward with new buildings. We very much appreciate what you're doing. And as you move forward with existing buildings in the coming year, which I hope you do. Think about all of the benefits of the Inflation Reduction Act. As a matter of fact, I paid about a seven thousand dollar premium. Had the Inflation Reduction Act been in effect, the cost of electrification would have been the same as gas. So why replace gas with gas when the electrification costs are being covered by rebates from PCE. Rebates from Bayran, rebates from the state and money for the Inflation Reduction Act. Thank you very much for all you do and good luck to you in the coming year on reach codes.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bruce Nagle. Bruce, you need to unmute on your end. Jose Garcia.
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, yeah. Hi, this is Jose. I'm with TRC. We're a consultant for PCE. We've been helping them with the reach codes effort. And, and TRC is a construction and engineering company. I'm a licensed mechanical engineer. I actually. Did HVAC and plumbing design work for a few years prior to joining TRC. I did want to address the second virtual speaker. Because I did work on some cost estimating with PCE. And I do have some answers about the existing building costs. I think, yeah, so first of all, I definitely hear and understand your concern. I think that it's important to clarify some of the triggers for this. For instance, installing. A new EV car, I think was the example, will not require you, based on this language. To actually upgrade all of the wiring in your home. The trigger for that panel language is an upgrade. Or replacement of the panel. And so you would actually have to already be doing work on the panel. In order for that particular measure that you were talking about, the electric readiness. To kick in. And then at that point, what the language is saying. Is that the new panel would have to have reserve electrical capacity. And breakers space. So what that means, that doesn't mean that you have to run all that wiring. At that point, when you're doing that upgrade. It just means that that new panel has to be ready for those new circuits. So in that case, it's, it's while you have an electrician out. That you would, and go ahead, Jeff, if you have a comment, you can jump in. Okay, no, I wasn't sure. Yeah, but so that, so. That's the trigger is when you're already working on the panel. And the cost is actually. You know, if there is a cost, there may be no cost. And if there is a cost, it would be marginal. It's the cost of that. You know, maybe the next size up panel. I was just interviewing an electrician about this yesterday. So I think that's important. And then, you know, as far as the air conditioning, it's the same thing. The trigger is only, it, that language is only triggered, you know, there's only. An enforcement of that when you're already working on your air conditioning system. And as far as the costs there. The work we did, we showed that. The installation of the AC condenser would cost seventeen thousand five hundred versus nineteen thousand for a heat pump unit. With a tech rebate, which are expected to return after the end of twenty twenty two. You'd actually have a negative cost, a negative marginal cost. And then as far as pre wiring for the heat pump water heater. We estimated the cost to be around five hundred to two thousand dollars. So I hope that answers the concerns of that gentleman.
Thank you.
We can try Bruce one more.
Let's try Bruce one more time.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Great. We've talked about. Things or some of the positive things that we'll get in terms of eliminating. Some of the issues and. You know, the poisons and everything else that are, are coming with the current gas infrastructure that we have. We haven't talked about is the fact that cooking on induction stove is a positive. But besides the fact that you eliminate the forty two percent of. Asthmatic symptoms that come to small children, you end up with a stove that's better than the one you had before. Better control in regards to how much you can adjust and fine tune how much heat you provide. Better in terms of the fact that if somebody puts their hand on a burner, they don't get. Burned by it, better than the fact that you have a fire hazard for kids if you have flames. And so all these things, and by the way, you know, if you look at French Laundry, which is one of Michelin's awards. Awards since two thousand and seven, the highest awards, they've been going on induction cooking for a long time. So when we look at things, we need to look at the positive as well as the negative side. One of the benefits of heat pump technology is that it tends to smooth out the, the amount of heat it comes in generally in a, in a building that. Doesn't have this, you get these cycles where if the temperature is cold outside. It'll warm it up and then go down and then warm it up and go down again. Whereas with a heat pump, it, it generally has it as a constant thing. So you're in constant comfort. So I think what we need to look at is not just the fact that there are a lot of these side effects that we need to address. Including climate change, but the fact that some of this new technology is going to provide a better living experience. And we should be looking at that as part of the reason that we're moving to this new technology. And I definitely agree with all the things that have come previous to us, all those speakers I know and. And treasure their expertise and hope that you treasure it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more that just came up. Susan Suzanne Emerson.
I think I'm unmuted now. My name is Suzanne Emerson. I'm a Greenpoint Raider. I've been working on Greenpoint rated projects in Portola Valley since the, since Portola Valley adopted that requirement. I do support the direction you're going here. I think it'll make it a lot more streamlined, especially for large new residences. To go just with the all electric and the Calvin verification instead of going with the much more complicated. One foot for every square feet above some particular amount. Where I see softness in the new program is in remodels that are less than a fifty percent rebuild. Our current program that requires a green point checklist and verification either by a raider or by the building official. I'm sorry, the building inspector. For encourages. And motivates projects to have a certain amount of energy efficiency. Upgrades at the time they're doing a remodel that, that the new program won't have. So for instance, projects I'm working on right now where they're doing remodels of various areas of the home. The current program that you have in place. Sort of almost sort of pushes them to put insulation in the rest of the attic in the rest of the house in order to get to the numbers they need in the. Greenpoint program. And under the new program, that won't exist. There won't be. A system to motivate people to make the other areas of their home any more energy efficient than they already have. So I would hope your sustainability committee might want to put some thought into, in, into that area of sort of softening. Of the softening that is occurring if this code change is modified. That being said, I'm super excited about the things you have on the table for. I'll electrifying existing homes and I look forward to those going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more?
Kristy Corley.
Yes, I noticed last week the planning commission was canceled. And that is a time that the public can discuss some of these things. So I'm wondering when you are going to bring. This information to the planning commission so a number of residents can hear this multiple times. That's my first comment and question and encourage you. To bring this information to as many meetings as possible. Beyond sustainability and town council, but for me, this fits in, in. The planning commission who plans for building codes and building in our town. And. So that's one comment. I guess the other one question I have. Is, you know, communication with. The residents regarding gates, fences, decks. Beyond. The electricity and gas. How and, and costs. I think that was a really good question that Sarah asked is. We would like to see lists of costs. So when we go to do these endeavors, we are very clear on cost. And so I appreciated. I, I forget his name being, giving us that information, but I think we'd like to see it listed in, in a. Thorough format. And those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. No further hands raised. Okay, I will. Close public hearing then and bring it back to the council for discussion. Maybe Jeff, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, I, I am very supportive of these, this, these, these adoptions and want to move forward. And I, I will thank the, the various public commentators who have made the arguments. I don't need to make it. You know, the, the electrification of buildings is, is. It's a really important step that, that every jurisdiction really needs to be taking and, and the evidence for, you know, the. Climate change is upon us. You know, this, this past summer. You've seen, you know, it's beyond question at this point. And we really need to be looking at the new construction and at the existing construction. And, you know, as others pointed out, you know, your, your gas stove is poisoning you. It's, it's the, the air inside your house. If you're not running a fan at the same time as your gas stove is, would, would fail EPA standards for outdoor air. After about a half an hour or less. The, the, you know, the things in the, in the exhaust from your gas stove, they, they don't, they don't float. They actually sink towards the floor and they affect pets and children. I mean, it's, it's, it's a win win at every level. Removing the gas system from, from neighborhoods is, is something we have to start doing because the gas system leaks, even when you're not using any gas. The combustion of the gas, obviously, and then the, the indoor health. So I. I support this, the ordinance as the, the new group of ordinances as, as written, and I do think we should be looking at even more aggressive stances on existing. And on replacement of appliances because I think we really have to start, start. You know, once you've bought a new water heater, it's going to be there for at least fifteen years. So the, the sooner we can start phasing them out, the better.
Thank you. John.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jeff. I think this is the right way to go and I like the ordinances, generally the way they're written. I. I'd like to move ahead tonight. With what's been codified so far. I think as far as the. Existing buildings go, I think that we need to. Approach that a little more carefully. I think some of Dave Cardinal's comments were, were legitimate. There are going to be. A number of situations where, where the cost is going to be prohibitive. Unless we managed, unless we include some exceptions for people in. A situation where, for instance, you might have to put an entire new electrical system up a hundred and fifty foot driveway, which could be really prohibitively expensive. I think long term, we need to get there for everyone, but we need to do it in a, in a manner that's fair that keep people from having to move out of town. So. Yeah, I'm, I'm very much in favor of moving ahead with the way it's been written tonight.
Thank you.
I think. I don't disagree. I, you know, this, this is not my area of expertise. I'll fully acknowledge that and I do appreciate. The public comments and the experts and the community member that's been here tonight. My concern. Is that we don't have a lot of community members probably aware of this at this point. We usually have many more community members. In a council meeting and it's great to have experts, but I don't like it when. And it's great to have experts, but I don't like it when we have more experts than we do community members. And I guess, you know, I'm certain I'm going to be the minority point of view on this, but I just am a little concerned that you know, in general, things I've been hearing from community members about the home hardening ordinance as well. I worry that sometimes we quickly go to, well, it's not quick because I know that that the the wildfire protection preparedness committee was working on that for a long time. But I do worry that we have it some of the more extreme versions in our town more and more. And I know that there's community members that didn't know about, you know, the the combustible materials measure and really what that means to people when they're building a house or doing a remodel. And so I just want to learn from that experience and the feedback I've gotten about that. And that's what I'm thinking about as I'm giving these comments tonight. And so I just do wonder if there's a more balanced approach, an approach that really does vet out the you know, the the one example we have from a community member tonight about what would be cost prohibitive. And I wonder if there's ways to to work towards this more with incentives or penalties or or things like that. So that's that's my comment. I know I will be in the minority, but I just want to represent what I think would be feedback from at least some community members.
Aaron.
Well, I have an opposite view from Sarah. I am enthusiastically supporting this. We have actually been talking about this for a long time because I remember having arguments with Ann Winger. And she's been off the council for a few years. And I've talked about it in the county on all the various boards. A few things I did want to bring up. Oh, for Dave Cardinal and others, Josie Gallard and Tom Cabot in Menlo Park have done extensive work on electrifying existing homes with hundred amp panels. It can be done. They did a presentation to the sustainability. I brought them here. They did a presentation to the sustainability committee. I will check and see if it was recorded because it's really amazing. And happy to bring them back for, you know, a public meeting. So Dave, you actually can put a car charger in with your hundred amp panel. The heat pump water heaters and the heat pump HVAC system for remodels. I realize that that is probably a bridge too far for us to go to tonight. But we absolutely should be thinking about it. And I would recommend that we ask the sustainability committee to work on that. They actually could talk to Josie and Tom. It would be very helpful. I think we really need to start thinking of how we electrify the existing homes because it's great for the new builds to do all this, but how many new builds do we have a year?
Two hundred and fifty-three over the coming eight.
Oh, that that's another idea I had. I think we should require PUDs to have their own microgrid. I'm serious because it's really good in a fire and that's where it's going anyway, right, Jeff? Micro grids? He's talking, but I can't hear him.
Yes.
Okay. That was another thing, but it's it's helping the residents electrify their homes, their existing homes and many who don't have large electrical panels. And the problem with the upgrading of the electrical panel here, because I was going to do it. And I and I had undergrounded my my overhead lines, but I did that like in two thousand four and it's too small. Now it has to be bigger. So that would mean tearing up the, and I have a long driveway, tearing up the entire driveway and redoing it. So I had a guy come out and he figured out I could do a lot of things with my existing panel. It is more than that. What else did I want to say? So just to be sure, to be clear, the rainwater capture, the gray water system, that's going to the sustainability committee. We're not talking about that tonight. Okay. And one thing that Jeremy and I discussed several years ago, and we had a rather heated discussion about this, was amending our ordinance to allow green infrastructure in the setback, green infrastructure such as water tanks. And that went on a list and then we got super busy and I understand it, but can that get back on the list, Laura? Thanks.
Back on the list. Thank you.
And I think that's it. I, yeah, I know a lot of residents are going to fight this and they're going to think it's more expensive. And I can tell you, I have a heat pump water heater. I put in a heat pump water heater. I put in a heat pump dryer. Those are, I will say, I do a lot of line drying. So if you do a lot of line drawing, it's great, but it does take a long time. I put in mini split AC units and it's unbelievable how inexpensive it is to do your daily chores with these appliances. So I think they do pay for themselves. And the bottom line is, I mean, climate change is to borrow a phrase from one of our candidates, the existential crisis of our time. It is happening now with the what we see it here with the wildfires, the hurricane, the flooding. And it requires big action and sacrifice. So that is why I wholeheartedly endorse this and I would like us to go further in the near future. I won't be here, but I hope that the new council members feel the same. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm I'm very supportive of this as well. I think the folding in of the emergency fire ordinance and and changes that we made there and the refinement on the decking materials is good. I like all the energy stuff. I I think we should send the stuff that staff is recommending to sustainability for 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 the work. And I actually don't completely disagree with Sarah that one other thing we might send to the sustainability committee to look at is where it might be reasonable to allow exceptions for situations. I I'm not sure if Dave, it sounds like you may not actually need an exception in his situation. But there we have a lot of weird properties in Portola Valley. And I would hate to not have somebody do a little bit of an energy efficiency upgrade or a little bit of electrification because if they do a little bit, they're getting forced to a lot that they don't want to take on. So I I think it might be worthwhile putting this in place as we have it here tonight and then referring it to the sustainability committee to think about are there any areas where we might want to tweak it back a little bit or or circumstances where we might want to grant exceptions that we aren't currently granting. There are currently some exceptions in there, but maybe there are some other situations that are Portola Valley specific that we haven't really thought through.
Another, if I could comment, just going back to someone Sarah's concern, I I just want to want to be clear that what's really before us tonight is addresses mostly new construction.
Yeah.
And that, and I don't think in any case it is more expensive than going with electricity to that point than with gas. So we're not talking about an increasing cost really for for new construction. For remodels and and existing buildings is another story. And there, like Craig said, there are a lot of really strange conditions that you come upon. And I think you're absolutely right that we got to, we want to make sure that we don't preclude the improvement in some, to some extent, trying to get to the to the to the best possible result. So I think what we've got tonight is is something we really ought to move ahead right away.
So so I have two questions. Well, one comment, one question, just a clarifying comment, I guess. Definitely cost is one of it, but I'm just going to be you know, fully honest that it's not just about cost. It's, you know, for for somebody that wants to move to Portola Valley and build a house, they now have you know, they can't, they have to use non-combustible materials fully and they have to reuse full electrification. And so it's, you know, it is extreme. And so I just want to you know, that is a deterrent to maybe some people moving here and and that kind of thing. And so I just don't, I guess I bring it up not because the intent isn't absolutely good. I'm not debating that whatsoever. I'm just wondering if there are ways that are a little bit more moderate or staged or ways to do it with incentives and or or penalties. I realize I will be absolutely outvoted, but I just wanted to clarify that my point of view is not exclusively related to cost, which probably makes it even worse for those of you that disagree with me. But I just want to represent the point of view that people, you know, from those that are not here to represent that point of view.
Right. You know, I think you make a really good point on that. And I think probably the answer is that we build up and and through education and and get people to realize that it's actually a much better way to go anyway, from many, many other alternatives that rather than sticking with gas, going to electricity has all these other benefits that aren't necessarily really acknowledged.
It's more firesafe.
I have a question about, yeah, I have a question about when somebody buys a property here, are they informed that like upfront that if you buy here, you will not be able to do this, 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 and this if you're building a house? Or do they find that out after they bought the house and start working with an architect? Like, what is that process? How does that work?
Laura, maybe you can address this. I think, I mean, any any resident or non-resident or anybody can go to the building department and ask for what our requirements are at any time.
Right. Right.
We 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 get a lot of inquiries from people that are considering buying houses and ask us what the regulations are.
Yeah, okay.
Am I breaking up? Can you hear me now?
Well, you're good.
I can hear you. I mean, the other thing that I'll point out is that the California Energy Code is generally is being modified and is is much is basically now pretty strongly biased towards electric buildings as well. So this this question of electrifying a new building versus you sticking with mixed fuel is, I mean, it's it's a, it's it's the same issue is going to come up in any jurisdiction now. You're you're going to, it's going to be a lot easier to comply with the energy code with an all-electric building anywhere. So the the all-electric for new buildings isn't even, it's no longer, I mean, I think thanks to the past three years where PC was pushing other jurisdictions to adopt all-electric building mid-cycle, the new code cycle is much more aggressive. And so now the 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 next step for the cycles, I mean, you know, all-electric in new buildings is almost that ship is pretty much sailing. So this going after existing buildings is really the next, the next place that the next sort of area, the next pursuit that we need to think about. So honestly, I don't think if you're going to, if you're going to build a new house in Portola Valley, your requirements, even with this code, are not going to be that much different than surrounding jurisdictions.
What happens from here in terms of this process then? Because I didn't think we had a vote on it tonight, right?
Well, we do. We need to wave.
We're adopting the building code, sorry.
Okay.
Come back for final vote next time.
Right.
Okay, so with that, then, is anybody ready to make a motion?
I will make a motion. We recommend approval of the twenty twenty-two California Building Code standard. That's a local amendment.
And waive the first reading.
And waive the first.
Oh, and direct some of it to the sustainability committee?
Uh, yes.
That be in the motion?
We can do a second motion. Why don't we do a second motion for that? Okay, so you're seconding, Marion? Okay.
Second.
Uh, motion by John, seconded by Marion.
Councilmember Alfs?
Yes.
Councilmember Durbin?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Now.
Mayor Hughes?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay. And then is there a second motion on what we want to send to sustainability?
Yes, but I can't remember all of it. I move that we direct the sustainability committee to review, analyze and provide recommendations on updates to the gray water ready infrastructure and reduction of potable water use on turf requirements with the review of the M, the Wheelow and other water conservation measures and wasn't there something else?
Consider exceptions to where where appropriate to electrification requirements.
And consider exceptions where appropriate to electrification requirements.
Okay, got it. Do we also want to ask them to look at the other thing that we we did not include, I think, in this ordinance tonight, but we might want to at some time in the future of upgrading water heaters when you're not doing a new build. So
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
As well as upgrading water heaters when you're not what?
Water heaters and gas.
Other gas appliances, yeah.
Water heaters and other gas appliances when you're not doing remodels or you're doing very small remodels.
As a
When you are ready to
Replace some burnout.
Yeah.
A gas water heater or a ga- other gas appliance.
Okay, so moved by Marion.
Can you, I got so confused there. That that you're basically asking the sustainability committee to look at those things. Yes, okay.
And come back with
Yeah, got you.
Okay, so seconded by John. I saw a nod. Okay.
Councilmember Alfs?
Aye.
Councilmember Durbin?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Yeah.
Mayor Hughes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us then to item six B. Another public hearing on the ordinance amending chapter eighteen point four and eighteen point twelve oh twenty about supportive and transitional housing.
Good evening. Once again, this presentation is going to be given by our consultant planner, Jacob Garcia.
Welcome, Jake.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can you see my screen? Okay?
It says started screen sharing, but it's not coming up yet. So give it a second.
Okay, my computer is frozen as well, so maybe a little delay. Me.
No, we're still going.
Still waiting.
Still waiting.
You have still started screen sharing.
Yeah, my screen's frozen up as well. It actually won't let me click on anything. So
Nope, there we go. The screen sharing ended. So now we're back to
Jake, if it doesn't work, you can email it to me and I can try it for my end too. Okay, I will try it one more time and otherwise I'll send it over to you and see if it works. Can you see it now? Okay?
Yeah. Yes.
Great. Um. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I'm Jacob Garcia and I'm a consultant planner for the town. The item before you tonight is a request to consider amendments to Portola Valley Municipal Code to comply with state laws regarding supportive and transitional housing. The purpose of the proposed zoning amendments is to update the town's municipal code to comply with state law. And program eight of the town's current housing element includes a goal to amend the town zoning ordinance to fully comply with state laws relative to transitional and supportive housing. The proposed zoning code amendment would allow the town's code to comply with Senate Bill two and Assembly Bill two one six two. In short, these amendments would implement the last remaining program in the current housing element and bring the zoning code into compliance with state law. For starters, to the proposed zoning ordinance amendments would update the relevant definitions to comply with state law definitions. Currently, the town has its own definition of supportive supportive housing and transitional housing. And the proposed amendments would revise definitions to align with the state law definition. Oops. SB two amended both California's Housing Element Law and its Housing Accountability Act and requires local governments to take specific actions to encourage the development of supportive and transitional housing. As relevant to the proposed zoning code amendments presented within this report, SB two's amendments require jurisdictions to treat supportive and transitional housing like other types of permitted residential uses in a zone. Currently, the town has occupancy standards on transitional and supportive housing of six or fewer persons. However, the town does not have occupancy standards in single-family residential zones. Therefore, the town would have amended zoning code to remove the six or fewer persons limitation for both supportive and transitional housing in its three single-family residential zones. Um, AB two and six two took effect and amended the Housing Element Law to require that supportive housing be permitted by right uh, be permitted by right use in zones where multifamily and mixed-use developments are permitted. Uh, this may include non-residential zones that permit multifamily uses. Albeit, the proposed supportive housing must satisfy certain requirements uh, to qualify as a use by right. A B two one six two further updated the requirements of S B two under which previously the town could require discretionary permits for supportive and transitional housing if other residential units required such permits. By updating the zoning code for S B two and removing the language six or fewer persons in single-family zones, the changes would effectively address the mixed-use uh, zones that permit residential uses, including the town's administrative professional and planned community districts to allow for supportive housing as a permitted by right use. Uh, these amendments also include a cleanup of existing errors identified by staff. And at its, uh, the Planning Commission at its regular June first meeting voted to recommend the adoption of the, uh, municipal code amendments with minor changes to the wording. And finally, on your screen is the staff recommendation and, uh, planning staff and the town attorney are available for any questions the town council may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake. Are there any questions? Marion.
I just said one question that, um, under next steps, it talks about the low barrier navigation center that's, um, I guess by law or by right now required in any mixed use and non-residential zones, um, that permit multifamily housing. Are those, are the low barrier navigation centers like the places where they have services for people to homeless people to try to get them in housing, get them on their feet? Is that what we're talking about?
Um, I'll answer that, that question. And yes, that's, that's exactly right. Um, there's now a third category of specialized housing services known as low barrier navigation centers that, um, the state is requiring, uh, cities and towns to incorporate into their zoning code. And since those, um, types of uses are only required in multifamily and mixed-use districts, we will be bringing those, um, amendments to you in connection with the housing element zoning amendments. So this particular ordinance does not address low, the low barrier navigation centers.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
I talked to Cara earlier today, so I got all my questions in.
Okay, um, is there any public comment on this item?
Taking my time, but so, no.
Not seeing it. Nope.
Last call for public comment.
Okay, I will close the public hearing then and bring it back to council for discussion, possible action. Any discussion? Oh, anybody ready to make motion? Jeff?
Sure, I will make the motion. Sorry, I'm trying to get back to the first page of the staffer. Uh, I will move that we waive reading and introduce the ordinance amending chapter eighteen point oh four, uh, regarding supportive and transitional housing.
I'll second.
And the other sections also, right?
Sorry, yes.
Um, moved by Jeff, seconded by Sarah.
Councilmember Alfs.
Aye.
Councilmember Durbin.
Aye.
Councilmember Richards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Hi.
Mayor Hughes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you all. That brings us to item seven, Council Liaison Committee Regional Agency Reports. Who want to kick off? Oh, Marion, do you have a?
I only have one.
Just one? Go for it.
Um, way more next one. Um, I went to the race and equity. As did John. We both went to the race and equity meeting. They started the meeting with a, a gratitude or gratitude icebreaker. That's what it was, which I thought was really nice. Um, Lucy started it and she talked about how cultivating gratitude helps sort of set the tone for a meeting and makes people feel better. So everybody talked about what they were grateful for, like Georgia Lane or someone's seven-year-old daughter or the weather. I mean, and it was, it was nice.
We've been doing that finance committee meetings.
I mean, it was kind of like when I tried to bring all the people of faith, remember the same idea? And then they did the land acknowledgement and that was really lovely too. And I have seen land acknowledgements being, um, recited more and more. That means. Okay, then they discussed how to spend the Inclusionary Housing Fund resources and what they've done is they have, um, I think they had a little subcommittee who talked this through and brought back recommendations and they're sending us a memo with just a lot of recommendations that we can take or leave or expand. Um, but just a few of them were to be as equitable as possible in the distribution of the funds limit to low and very low income housing. Uh, they're kind of leaning towards loans rather than grants, but maybe not entirely loans, but mostly loans. Uh, smaller versus larger loans or grants. Um, they want, they think supporting A D U's would be a good use of the money. Uh, they had questions like if, 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 if funds would go to homeowners willing to build A D U's and they want deed restrictions or something of that sort. How does this work if the owner's actually wealthy, but the person's willing to deed restrict the unit, um, and rent below market? Those are the kind of questions they were answered. Um, consider giving to affiliated housing. Should there be income requirements to get the aid? Uh, they don't want it to go to consultants, only dedicated staff. They thought perhaps a print, there could be apprenticeships or internships of folks to help with this. And there should be a competitive process. Then what else did they talk about? Oh, they, there is a program at the church Valley Pres on Sunday morning at ten forty-five. It's called We've Come This Far By Faith Songs From The Black Experience. So they, they thought that would be really nice for people to attend. It's also happening at three o'clock at Trinity Church in San Carlos, but at our church at ten forty-five, and I'm actually thinking and going, are you, John? No, not really. Okay. I like that kind of thing. And what else? Um, they talked about elections in, uh, January for chair and vice chair because Kim is going to step down his chair. She's even going to decide whether she wants to remain on the committee and our student Cole, one of our students is having a lot of challenges doing this as a student. And so he's going to step down, but he would like to be a kind of a little student liaison representative and just attend when he can and doesn't, he won't have voting rights, but I think that's, we thought that was a good idea. And they even talked about recruiting from Woodside and M A. We also have a student from Eastside Prep as a voting member. And what else? And then they talked about fixing San Mateo. Remember that whole thing? And so they're sending a sample. They are, um, onboard. There's, they're sending a sample letter that we would send to the Board of Supervisors um, endorsing it. And that will come and I hope to be in the next packet or yeah, October twenty-sixth meeting. And because it's like November, first week of November, the Board of Supervisors is taking a, a position on this. And that was it. The only other thing that I did want to mention is I went to Supervisor Carol Grooms' retirement party at the San Mateo Event Center. And I just really enjoyed it because I saw people I hadn't, I worked with like fifteen years ago. And it, I'm just going to tell you guys, doing the regional work, you make amazing friends um, of staff and other council members and assembly members. And it was just nice to see everybody and to realize how much work everybody's done. So, there you go.
Okay, I am, I had two, but now I have one. Marion just. So the S E C on the tenth, uh, the main item on the agenda was, uh, view of a deviation and variance for a quarter acre parcel on Wayside Road. Um, interesting situation that, um, because it's a quarter acre parcel on a one acre zone, it, um, setbacks don't work, basically. So this would be a house that's completely in setbacks, right on the road, putting in a, a little driveway and some and a garage, uh, Irish structure that would actually help stitch the hillside together a little bit and, and protect the road, which is a little bit questionable in many spots. Um, so that was approved. Actually, this is a, the second time this was approved. It was approved back in two thousand and two or something for previous owner and they didn't act on it. So they came back and came through again. And then there was discussion of, uh, review of updating the design guidelines and what the process, that process is going to look like and when that will happen coming up. Informal talk about that.
Jeff?
Yeah, uh, let's see. I, uh, on the fifth, we had the Airport Roundtable met. Um, not really a whole lot of consequence. So they just adopted a conflict of interest code and basically, uh, so the members of the Airport Roundtable now have to form, fill out Form seven hundred like everyone else. Other than that, nothing new there. Um, I just, I actually had, um, P C, we had our Executive Committee and our Audit and Finance Committee this morning. Uh, our audit will be going to the board this month. Uh, no irregularities. We're, um, things are, we're, we're doing well. And we're moving forward, uh, everything. I think at our last meeting, I reported from our, um, our retreat with several really interesting, exciting results about, uh, basically our, our, our conversion to, uh, I mentioned it earlier, the, um, our time coincident procurement is looking very feasible going forward and, um, and our efforts on, like, decarbonization of the county are actually, um, we've, we've got some, making, making some really good progress in that as well. Other than that, I didn't have any meetings.
Uh, can I ask Jeff a question?
Yes.
Okay, so Jeff, uh, regarding the Airport Roundtable.
Yeah.
There has been a considerable uptick in aircraft flying over the town over the last six or eight months. Uh, do you know if that's been due to more travel changes at the of, uh, flight patterns or is there anything you should know about that?
Yes, um, it's, um, it, it is, I mean, traffic has picked up. I mean, it's, it's been rebounding kind of gradually, but it's, it's rebounded a lot this year. It's, it's getting back almost, I think it's actually maybe at or slightly above pre-COVID levels. Um, and as traffic picks up, you get more vectoring. Most of the flights over Portola Valley are ones that are not, it's not a direct approach. They can't, they can't land the first time they approach. So they vector, they, they circle over us. And so I think there's a, you know, the, the increase in traffic to the airport may not be that great, but as, but a lot of, as that, you know, because it's at the margin when that traffic increases, more of those flights get vectored. So, yeah, that's probably what we're hearing out here.
Thanks, guys.
Sarah?
We had, um, our P V S D meeting this week and it was a good meeting. Um, they gave us an update on the school's progress. And basically they are planning for full occupancy at both new sites, um, when kids go back to school in January. So that's pretty exciting. I know. They are also, probably feels very slow to them, but when you're not in the weeds. Um, so, and, uh, they are going to be, uh, there's going to be another tour the first week of November. So I hope to go on that because I missed the last one. Um, they, we also covered, um, their progress with Woodside Fire and D E M for their emergency planning plan. And working hard on that and they expect it to be done within the next couple of weeks. And they want to launch it with an in-person meeting with families and Woodside Fire together. So I think that sounds really great. Um, we also discussed the fact that we are going to be working on the sheriff's contract. Um, and just kind of brainstormed a little bit about how things that they're doing dovetail with the town's sheriff's contract. And so just had a discussion about keeping in close contact as we go through that process. Um, they reported very good news in terms of, um, COVID. They said everything is finally feeling very much back to normal, parents in the classrooms and all activities and, um, school programs and assemblies and whatnot, uh, back in full swing and very well attended. And then we talked a little bit about affiliated housing. Um, that would be, you know, much further down the line for them, but we just kind of informed them about the program and, um, answered a few questions there. The other update I have is, uh, Jeff and I just finished today, uh, eight, we had, uh, eight interviews over Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday this week for the A D U ambassadors. We got an awesome flurry of applicants last minute last week. And we've decided to, um, offer, um, the opportunity to the entire group. It seems like a great group of, you know, community members and we've shared with them that we said, why not try and include everybody? Um, they all seemed on, very much on board with the goals and there was a lot of good consensus, wouldn't you say, um, Jeff, in terms of how people answered their questions and stuff like that? So I, I expect it to be a really good working team. So what we'll have to do is bring that structure back to the next council meeting just to vote on it to, um, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's. But, um, in the meantime, what we have asked them to do, I, we, we sent the email out, um, just late this afternoon, um, inviting them to join and, um, get working on a kickoff meeting. And, um, also, we did ask that they pick two, we, two liaisons within the team that will be our point of contact. Um, just to thought, just to simplify communications. And so the way that's going to work is I'll be Laura's primary contact, um, on the team, working with Jeff. And then they'll have a contact that Jeff and I work with or two contacts that, you know, obviously will be available beyond that, but that'll be kind of the, the high level structure of how that'll work. So.
When you said nine, it was like some structure.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. I said, you know, both for many, for many reasons, but I did selfishly say to, so Jeff and I don't have nine people. Um, so, um, there was really good synergies across all the conversations. So I think it's, I'm feeling real optimistic about that. And then we have, um, as you guys know, we have the audit on the Finance Committee on Tuesday and, um, I've got C A C tomorrow. So that's it for my updates.
Oh wait, one more thing I forgot to mention. So at Carol's Retirement Party, George Mater's daughter, whose name is Anne Stillman, Anne Mater Stillman, and she is the new head of Public Works in the County, which is like there's the county manager, there's Public Works, there's a head of health. Anyway, um, she sought me out because I have been emailing her because I, I had, I knew her when I was on C C A G because she worked in the county. Anyway, we had a very long conversation about her dad, about George, who I knew well and had the great fortune of working with. And if anybody wants any, any information about our conversation, I'd be happy to share. And they will eventually have a memorial.
Okay, I had wildfire, um, and the big item there was discussion of, um, basically planning out a ten-year fire mitigation plan, um, where we take on major fire mitigation projects in town like cleaning up private properties and, um, helping people retrofit and things that could cost us, you know, substantial amount of money and figuring out how to, how to take some of these major projects on to try and do town-wide versions of it, um, over a number of years. Um, and they're, that's really good ideas and, and I'm hoping that they'll come back to us, um, probably as part of the coming budget cycle with kind of the first step of that. And I'm thinking about what can we take on? How do we take it on to get really measurable results?
Can I ask a quick question? Um, and maybe it's not for you, but, uh, Sarah might know, um, Tricia Christensen was running this sort of, that, that, the project on Alhambra.
Yep.
That's, how is that? Okay, I was just curious. How, how is that? How is that going or how have they, how was progress on that?
You may, you may have heard from her recently to me, but
No, no, go for it.
The committee seems to be very excited about it. And that's one of the things looking at for this project is how do you, you know, roll that out? That's actually kind of like.
Is that a neighborhood cleanup?
It was nine or ten households. That was nine or ten households going together.
Well, they got nine or ten. That's great.
Isn't that Jennifer Eustace's idea?
She was, she was. She she did that on her neighborhood and then Tricia agreed to do it in her neighborhood. So good, okay.
Yeah, so that's that's one of the kinds of models that they're looking at.
Yeah, yeah.
Then then figuring out how do you throw town funding in on top of it where necessary and how do you reach out to people who, you know, don't have neighbors, help them. And so really a comprehensive program to really tackle some major fire cleanup. Cool. Um, okay, then BPTS. To there. Um they discussed the sheriff's contract renewal and uh didn't have a lot of input at that meeting, but they're gonna all the committee members are going away and thinking about it and and they'll discuss again at their next, excuse me, next meeting. Thoughts to thoughts, wrap up. Everybody thought the sheriff's department did a great job in helping with the road closure and things went pretty smoothly this year. So that was very successful. Um and that was it for me. Um, okay, is there any public comment on item seven?
No.
Nope, no hand raised. Okay, Jeremy, item eight, town manager report.
Thank you very much. I wanted to start with news that I I suspect people saw on the forum. Uh we're all sad to hear that um the deli uh is planning to close. Um I had reached out to Elias, the owner um upon hearing um the news and I'm a regular um customer uh of their burgers um and asked him uh if there's anything that he thought the town could help with in that regard. He's thinking about it, but um I hope he takes advantage, but at least a discussion with the with the staff, just as it relates to the kinds of things that that cause a business like his to to have challenges. The draft safety element is now available for review. I hope folks uh will take a look at it. Um I looked at the numbers uh this morning for hits on the website and we've seen only single-digit hits over the last four days. Um we hope to get more interest in in that element. Uh the, there are four committees that will be um having responsibility uh to review the draft, emergency preparedness, geologic safety, sustainability, and welfare preparedness. They will be meeting as a group of committees on October twenty-sixth and each of those bodies will um have a number of separate meetings to discuss the draft and um make recommendations to it. The uh sheriff's office contract is, council knows is up um for discussion. Um it expires at the end of the fiscal year next year. And we are soliciting input from the public on uh thoughts they may have on that update. And I'll be including a link to how to do that in the uh council meeting summary. The conservation committee and the ACC is, uh they are beginning to have discussions about updates to the design guidelines in town. Um that's a committee um commission-led effort. Um this is in response to the multitude of changes that we've made to code over the last bit of time, including the home hardening code. So that work will kick off a little bit later this year, but really started earnest in early twenty twenty-three. The star party was a gigantic success. Uh I heard that there were hundreds of people there, uh which is phenomenal. Um so kudos to nature and science for putting on yet another wonderful event. On uh the fourteenth, which is on Friday, uh the town is sponsoring a kids' movie night. Coco will be shown, so uh we hope uh to see you um and your families there. We just uh repainted our pickleball um lines at the all sports courts and we heard that they're um uh very much appreciated. Um we saw a bunch of people out there today or yesterday. Um so um hope you get out to play a little pickleball. The um state attorney general released new guidelines uh for mitigating fire wildfire risk from proposed developments in fire-prone areas. I think it's a, it's a an interesting read. I'm including that in the um council meeting summaries in our newsletter. Um as this has been a topic of conversation in the the community, in particular related to uh proposed developments in the town. The uh town continues to lead meetings with uh town institutions on evacuation efforts. This includes Department of Emergency Management and the sheriff's office, Woodside Fire Protection District, and members of the EPC. Uh we've been meeting with a number of institutions, the Portola Valley School District, the Woodside Priory, the Sequoias, and a future meeting's been scheduled with Windmill School. Uh the vice mayor mentioned some of the efforts of uh PVSD. Um and I think they've been very fruitful and we're encouraging each of those institutions to as quickly as they can prepare evacuation plans and have those discussions with their constituencies so we can include it in our uh evacuation planning efforts. That is my report. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any questions? Some question? Nope. Is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, David Cardinal. David, whenever you're ready.
Maybe having microphone issues again.
We do have one other speaker, so we'll come back to David.
Okay, we'll come back to you, David.
Uh Christie Corley.
Thank you. Um I'm just wondering if you could always with your updates of codes, breach codes, green codes. If you could show the crossout in red and any additions you write, so it's real obvious to us and the date that those codes were changed. I'm noticing when Jacob did his presentation that he did that and I do appreciate that. When I'm reading it, I can see what was changed. And in the future with other um presentations that would be helpful for us to see. So we can see the difference between the the California codes versus the reach codes that Portola Valley has chosen to do. It would be nice to see that list of where we went above and beyond the state codes. And what we changed since there's forty-five or eighty uh changes, would it be obvious if we were to go in and easy to find? And and that's a question.
Okay, thank you, Christie.
David Cardinal.
Okay, hopefully this works this time.
We hear you.
Oh, good. Um two-part comment, quick. One is for the town. Um you you do the residents with all the wailing and gnashing of teeth about the safety element. I'm kind of surprised that more people aren't actually reading it now that it's out. Which makes me kind of wonder if they really cared about it or they just wanted to whine about something. But separate from that, I did read it once and I'm I'm impressed. I think it's a it looks pretty good and uh I need to read it again, but uh congratulations on pulling it off. It's not easy to make sense of all the different laws and regulations and everything that's going on in the town. So um I thought it was a good document. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Any other?
Is it too late for me to make a comment?
No, it isn't.
Um Jeremy, remind me if you, did you mention when you gave the update about the safety element? Um what the review process amongst the committees is going to be? I can't recall if you've covered that and if you hadn't, maybe, did you touch on that?
Sure, let me, I can expand on it. So there are um four committees that have a responsibility um for safety-related issues um for the safety element. So those are the emergency preparedness committee, the wildfire preparedness committee, geologic safety and sustainability. So as part of the review process, those four uh committees will be meeting on October twenty-sixth uh together. And each of the committees then will have as many meetings as they would like over the course of the next few months to discuss elements of the um, to discuss the safety element in its draft form. It's um, it is a draft. Um we are expecting and hoping for comments from all the committees to make it an even better document in particular related to local um knowledge, et cetera. Um so that will go, that will go into the early next year. Uh we tentatively have this starting to come back to the planning commission um in January, but we uh it may very well be that we extend that out um if the committees wish to have additional input or additional time to to review the document.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um that brings us to item nine, adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight. See you next time.
Night, everyone.
Night.